We're on, okay, great. Good evening, it is six thirty, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, we have a forum tonight. We, I have not heard from Misty, I do not think Hunter's gonna make it, maybe Misty will join us in time. Please, join me for the pledge. And we're back here now. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. Couple upcoming meetings, October eighth, we have personnel at five thirty, followed by Facilities Committee at six thirty. That will be here in the, well, here at Dunn, in the school library. October fifteenth, we have Policy at five thirty, followed by a School Board Workshop at Russell School. As a reminder, our workshops now are also opening with a tour of the school that is hosting us. So if anyone's interested in a tour of Russell School, we do the tour right at the beginning of the session. So, start with tour at about six thirty. October twenty-second, we have Finance Committee. That will be at five thirty, again, here at the Dunn Library. Are there any actions relative to additions or adjustments to the agenda? Oh, the mic.
Okay, all right, thank you.
One at a time, huh? All right, so, no actions relative to the agenda, any, we will move to comments from the audience. Just, if folks wish to speak, we will start, do we have a microphone? Oh, it's in, it's at the podium, okay. Folks are welcome to step up to the podium, and you have up to three minutes to address the board on matters relevant to the work of the school district.
Hi, good evening, my name is Charity Klinger, Gray Maine. Not sure if I'm speaking prematurely or not, but I did want to make you folks aware, or at least put in a request. It's my understanding that the superintendent has received signatures to request a discussion, to have a fair share tax-based program when determining the budget moving forward. And again, it's just a discussion, and it's my understanding there was seven hundred and ninety-five signatures submitted. Seventy-five or seventy-nine, of which rumor mill has it that there wasn't a cover letter with. However, I am respectfully requesting that you honor those seventy-five or seventy-nine signatures and apply it to the other seven hundred-plus signatures that were submitted to you, and forward them on to the Town Council of Gray.
Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Alan Sarvenus, I live in Topsum with my wife and two sons. I also work during the day as a civic organizer and help individuals and groups execute local initiatives to petition and work with their government. I did work some with the local group who had turned in these petitions. And I just wanted to testify that they were awesome and they worked really hard. They definitely explained what they were petitioning to the people, and it was overwhelming support. There was nonpartisan most of the time, and with most districts, I think you're feeling that the property taxes and the burden on homeowners is to the point where they're just fed up. Now, I know a lot of the statutes and rulemaking and stuff coming down from above isn't, doesn't make it easy. But in this case, it would be awesome if you took those signatures, accepted them, passed it on to the town, and had a conversation about fair cost sharing for fair taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Moving on to our first, bear with me a sec, take action, to take action relative to our minutes from our September third business meeting.
I make the motion that we take action relative to accepting the permitting minutes of September third, two thousand and five, our regular business meeting.
Questions, comments, findings in those? All right, see none, all closed, great. All right, and handing it over to Dr. Turner for some recognition.
We have quite a few exciting recognitions today. I'm gonna turn it over to Middle School Principal Riley Benoit, who is here tonight to talk about some cool work some of our kids have been doing.
Thank you, it is my pleasure to introduce and to have the chance to recognize Olivia and Amelia Flanagan, if you guys could come up. Olivia and Amelia volunteered last spring for Special Olympics in Orano. They are outstanding students, citizens, they're athletes in their own right. So it was really great for them to be able to volunteer and give their time to support these other athletes. I'd encourage you to ask them some questions.
Great, welcome, do you wanna tell us a little bit about what you did in your volunteer time with the Maine Special Olympics?
We went up to Humaine and we helped out with Special Olympics, we helped out with the softball toss, we helped out with the track and field, and... Yeah, that's about it, but it was really like exciting to work with kids, and also any age up there that needed some extra help, and it was just so fun to get to help them.
There was also like so many funny people there, and it was just a great experience.
Questions from the board?
Did either of you get to be finish line huggers?
No, but there was a lot of us timing them.
Yep.
And then we were also at the end to like make sure they kept pushing and to like cheer them on to make sure that they would succeed to the end of the line.
Yeah, I've been to several of those, and the finish line is the place to be, and the track stuff, it's just hysterical, it's such a good time.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Sam?
Yeah, there was tons of people from all around Maine, lots of groups of people. Five thousand.
We received a letter from the State of Maine Special Olympics addressed to the school thanking us for what these kiddos did. So, you know, they're, they're good at downplaying it, but it's pretty special, the work they did if the Special Olympics took time to write us a letter to say how amazing it was. So we thought it was important that you all knew that as well.
Thank you.
Questions, more questions? I don't wanna put them on the spot further, what grade are you, are you doing?
I'm a freshman.
And I'm an eighth grader.
Oh wow, fantastic. Were you, were there a lot of high school volunteers, or were you a small, were you an elite group?
There was two other girls that were in my grade, and I think there was two younger girls, and then the rest were mostly adults.
Wow. Misty?
How did you get the opportunity to do this?
My mom works at Unum, and Unum was volunteered to help out with the Special Olympics.
Well, maybe this is something that we can make annual. What a great opportunity.
We plan to go up there next year, too.
Good, and bring a bunch more people with you.
Yeah.
I hope this really sparks your philanthropy, just passions, because it's really important to do that your entire life.
Great, well done. Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming in and taking the time to talk to us, and well done on your work with the Special Olympics.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Day and I were actually just talking about how we'd love to promote this within for our student athletes, as well as get some more of our students involved in this, so it's a great, if you, those of you who have never seen Special Olympics, it is awe-inspiring. The, the way those students work, and the encouragement that the community provides them, the winter sport as well as the spring track and field type event, it's unbelievable. So, if you ever get the chance, volunteer and go, like they did.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Did you go to the dance?
No, we haven't even watched it yet.
Ah, the dance is the thing. It is, it's just, it's, it's just so much fun, that's great.
So, related, it's a Special Olympics kind of meeting. We were notified in the last month since I've last seen you that Gray New Gloucester High School was named a Unified Champion School. And are you, Holly, are you telling?
I am not.
Okay, I didn't think so, but just checking. Yes, so I just couldn't, I knew someone couldn't come, and then I was like, oh, did they volunteer you and didn't tell me? Okay, perfect. So, so Gray New Gloucester High School has been named, so Unified Champion School is a distinction you have to apply for. So, and we linked in kind of the information to the school, but it means that you're putting forward things, including unified athletics, which I feel like we have communicated fairly well as a school, but also just different principles that really mean that we are committed to being a unified school that really values inclusion of all students. So, the high school, it was, Dr. Harvey worked really hard on that, Nate Priest was also really our athletic director, very involved in putting in our application. And we were notified very recently that our application was accepted and approved. And that application is now, we are a unified school until 2028. We have to then reapply if we want to continue to be a unified school. So it's not the kind of thing that you just get to keep, you have to continue that work. So, it's something we're incredibly proud of, there should be a banner coming, so we'll have another fabulous banner to put up at Gray New Gloucester High School. And just kudos to the kids in particular, but also the adults in the school that worked hard to have us qualify for this honor.
Fantastic, before we move on, any questions about that piece? Could you say a little bit more about the possibility of expanding?
Yeah, absolutely, so I had looked into Unified Champion School, of course, fully supportive of our school going after it, and I was mildly familiar with it, but once we were named, I was digging in to get some more information to share with you. And I didn't realize that you could apply as an elementary school. That is sort of a new thing, so younger schools are eligible. So one of the things our administrative team will be doing, actually, I think next week, we put it, I can't remember exactly where, but I think it's next week, is to look it over, because I suspect that most, if not all, of our schools will actually qualify without doing anything that they aren't already doing. And so I think Dunn School is an excellent example. We had Dunn School here, or Dunn School at our, at our board meeting sharing with you all what we've done around inclusive communication on the playground. And as you walk up through your playground, you can see the, the soundboard that we use to help children communicate with each other when verbal communication maybe is difficult for them. So, our schools are doing things like that all the time, and it's, those are the types of things that qualify you to be official unified school. So it seems to me that if our schools are already doing the work, it probably makes sense for us to get the credit for doing it. So, that'll be work that we undertake over the next couple of months to look into it and see, you know, what, what the requirements are, and do we already meet them, and if we don't, you know, are we interested in moving forward with, with changes that would make us eligible?
Great, look forward to seeing if we can add some more schools to that list. And?
And, last up, but certainly not least, we have Stephanie Haskins, our Director of Adult Education here, along with Teresa, who is her faithful everything, here to talk a little bit about some very exciting news, which is that we had thirty-three students participate in our Maine College and Career Access Program last year. And so Teresa, Stephanie is here, and Teresa, I'm sure, to tell you a little bit more about that program and the awesome work that our students have done.
So with limited PowerPoint or presentation skills, I brought some paper copies, so hopefully you guys can share. But what I wanted to do is just highlight some of our students. I wish more than anything that the invited students would come, and some wanted to, and some tried, and some said they would, and then canceled. So, I can barely get them across the stage to graduate, so coming in front of the school board, I think, was just too far. I asked too much of them. Someday we'll have a boisterous and outgoing adult ed student who will come, but...
Something you hear from Stephanie all the time when we talk about adult education is we meet people where they are and we take them as they come. And this is the absolute example of living that truth.
Yep, yep. So, so what is Maine College and Career Access? Just a little bit of background, it's a statewide adult education program partially funded through a state grant. It provides comprehensive advising and academic support to prepare students for success in post-secondary education or training. And the goal is to prepare adults for high quality, and a goal of preparing adults for high-quality employment and/or a credential of value. So what does an MCCA student look like? They could be working on their high set, but they tell us that they have interest in a particular career. So we really focus that high set on, you know, you need to bring your writing level to this if you're going to, you know, pursue that after you're done the high set. You really need to get your math this far. It could be recent graduates, maybe during their high set or during high school, they didn't really know what they wanted to do, and afterwards they come in and see us. We do have new Mainers who are awaiting credit analysis to see what they qualify. So we've had like a cardiothoracic surgeon who's training to be a CNA, and waiting for that credit transfer to see what, what they qualify for. And then another group of career changers, who are people who have worked a job, their kids have graduated, and now they're sitting there like, I hate this job, what am I gonna do next? And they come in and we can help them as well. So, who are these MCCA students? We have a recent graduate who's had to work really hard to take and pass the IBEW exam. And after about six months of working really hard on math, he passed. Now, is he definitely doing that? No, he's kept his option open for free community college. He's not sure which one he's gonna do, and we're gonna keep working with him and see which path he takes. We offer support through college math. We have a success, college success course students can take, where they actually use Brightspace, which is the learning management system used by the entire Humaine system, as well as the community college system. So what they're doing is, instead of trying to build the plane while they fly it, they're building it on the ground. They're building the skills to not just attend college, figure out what major they want, figure out how to take notes, but they're also using the learning management system. We do career exploration, enroll in early college courses. We've sent a couple of women to People's Inclusive Welding, which is a women-only welding program that can kind of reduce barriers for those who are kind of intimidated about attending. And then more. Now, I understand this girl, Charity Belle Guimon, she was one of our graduates this year. And if you wanna talk about overcoming barriers, she couldn't come today because she's a full-time college student, she had a driver's exam, and she's working full-time overnight. So, kudos to her, and I thought that was pretty exemplary for really being one of our rock star students. She came to us, she was nineteen, that was last September. She dropped out of high school very young, she moved around a lot as a teenager. Her goal was to earn her high set, go to college, give back to the people in her community, and make her dad proud. And that's what she said when she came to us. So our update is that she earned her high set last November of 2024. She completed a behavioral health profession training, also with a CPR first aid certification. She currently works overnight making twenty-one dollars an hour, and she's enrolled in college. Her goals are to get her driver's license, we have not heard yet, to buy a truck, and to complete college, which she's well on her way to doing all of that. Her quote was, "I've never had such a positive experience with teachers or people helping me, helping with my education. I wouldn't have traded my staff for anything, they were part of the reason I succeeded so much." I think her dad must be proud, like, he really has to be proud, I think she's hit it, hit it right on the head. Another student is Emily Fredette. She joined us when she was seventeen, she was part of the class of 2023, but unenrolled in November of 2022. She struggled severely in high school, and she just was desperate for an alternative pathway, it just wasn't working out for her. Just as note, her freshman year was COVID, and I think we found a lot of things like that happened. Her goal was to earn her high set and attend college. Just so you know, high set is lowercase with the asterisk, because that's their actual trademark. It, and it bothers on everyone, all of us. We're trying to get kids to capitalize things, proper nouns, but anyway. So an update on Emily, she earned her high set in May of 2023, in March. She enrolled in Free Community College at CMCC, and she's studying liberal arts. We were able to get an update that she's been on the Dean's List with President's Honors, which means her GPA is three point nine or above on a four-point scale. She's on track to graduate with an associate's degree. She's complete, once she completes her associate's degree, she wants to transfer to USM and earn a bachelor's degree in English. So, and Emily's quote is, "The staff at GNG's adult education program are fantastic. They are kind, encouraging, and incredible educators. The staff helped me get my high set transcript, enrolled me into college, and have been supporting me in my educational journey from day one. They take you and your education seriously, and they're willing to help you do whatever it takes to succeed." I wish they could have come, because we are so proud of them, it's really great. Do you guys have any questions about their journey or some of the things we offer? I like to say that we're sort of like, kind of like the parent who's been to college or been to these training programs, who can kind of give them some advice where maybe parents haven't been there, or they don't have that example. We kind of give them that soft landing in there until they can take off and do it on their own. Sometimes it's hard talking to an advisor when you don't know what you don't know, you don't know the next questions you need to ask. And so what we do is try to reduce those barriers. Students have dropped out before because they couldn't get their login right, and didn't go back to college, like, really? So, it's really getting through those barriers where they just thought they were too stupid and they couldn't do it. We're there to, to help them persevere until they can persevere on their own.
Great, thank you for this, I really appreciate, this is a really creative format that lets us feel like we got to meet them a little bit and, and see them and make them real. I'd like to say Emily and Charity, we're super proud of you, congratulations on what you've accomplished, and keep going. Perhaps you can queue up the broadcast of tonight so that they can hear that. They do get credit for being here anyway, this is a lot, this is actually a lot of personal information to share, and to put themselves out there like that is, is very brave and admirable. Would anyone else like to go on the record for our friends here? Sam? Oh, I think you turned yourself. Is he on? I just wanna make sure they hear you if they see the video later. I just wanna make sure they hear you if they see the video later. Hopefully another Michael pick it up.
Happy to speak.
So anyone who graduates before December thirtieth or thirty-first will be this year.
They can't hear you on the stream if you don't use the microphone.
Anyone who graduates with us by December thirty-first is still eligible because they would be considered the class of 2025. And after that, it is canceled. It's no longer there. We're very hopeful that new legislation will come through so that they will open it back up, maybe with different parameters, or maybe there was only one bill that went through, and it was to make it permanent. And maybe they would rather have it renewed every few years or something, because it's been hugely successful, hugely successful. And a lot of our students, you know, students have to take advantage of any Pell money or any financial aid they're eligible for first, so that doesn't cost the state anything. And a lot of our students, we talk to, we're blue in the face, and say that you likely don't have to pay, you'll likely qualify for Pell. But all they're hearing in the news is, don't take student loans. It's not a good value, and that's not true in every situation. So we really try to show them, fingers crossed it comes back. It's really been fantastic, yeah.
And do we know how many of our students have taken advantage of that? Or would it be hard to say because they're out of our?
I think that guidance has that data of where they were intending to go when they left.
When they're with us, we can ask them what they intend to do. Once they leave our doors, it's a little hard to get really strong, reliable data, but we could get some inference and best guesses data.
Great. Anyone else? Thank you so much for coming in and representing your students and for them to be willing to be represented in your PowerPoint.
Thank you.
All right, now we have a little bit of old business. Cleaning up a few things and looking through our work with job descriptions, policies. We did find a few outliers, some job descriptions that the Personnel Committee did work on in 2024, and lack a paper trail to indicate that we ever approved them as the full board. So these aren't things, they might not be unfamiliar, the work that's already been done, but we wanna make sure to close the loop on them. I would hear a motion to take these as a group.
I make the motion that we consider the job description for the esports advisor as well as the transportation supervisor. Second.
Any questions or comments on either of these two job descriptions? All right, all in favor of making it official? Wonderful, opposed? Okay, and I think this completes, does this complete the job description? No.
No, but we're so close.
So close. It's a moving target. Okay, and that's it for old business. On to new business. We have to discuss the cost-sharing formula petitions, or the two petitions received on September ninth, 2025, and September eighteenth. So everyone should have seen the memo I put together in advance along with a copy of the cover of the one petition, and then I did put the statute in. So I want to certainly open on how we take this on, but I would like to stay pretty organized here. My thinking is that the first step is we have to address as a board the signatures received to the school board. They've been at the central office if folks wanted to see them. I brought them here tonight. So we have the first one received in this format with the cover sheet stating the purpose of the petition. We knew in advance that was coming organized drop-off from Susan Fuller, who dropped that off in person. And then the second one, which looked like this without a cover sheet, handed off to Maggie from in Allen on a different date. So they both had been reviewed by the Town of Gray in terms of registered voters and were marked up accordingly. That was done, obviously, separately because they did not come in together. So in terms of whether they're, we know that these folks are registered voters. We do not know if there's duplicates in these two lists because they did not come in at the same time. And that work has... Sorry. They, we know that the registered voters or not-registered voters are marked. We do not know if there's any duplicates because they came in separately. So the Gray clerk looked at them individually, did not have them at the same time. So we have not verified that signatures are not repeated. Does that make sense?
So with the process of any petition, it goes before the clerk, and they verify that those are true registered voters of the district that those petitions relate to. So in this case, all the petitions were given to the clerk. If on the second petition, there were any duplication or anything like that, it would have been so noted, it would not have been accepted as a signature. That's how they verify signatures.
We have no way of knowing that, Fran, because this was already in our possession when this was given to the town clerk. So we have that.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
There we go. I also wanna note that the purpose of the petition, the first one, which is in the materials, has a stated purpose of requesting the Board of Directors convene a meeting of municipal representatives under Title 20A, Section thirteen oh three, subsection thirteen oh one, excuse me, to reconsider current cost-sharing formula. It also includes a proposal on what that formula would be. Any other questions about the content of what we received before we move on to discussing what we do with it?
Yes, I have one question. The second submittal, is it my understanding that those signatures haven't been vetted and verified?
So they have been vetted as, are they registered voters of Gray?
They just haven't been cross-referenced to there to make sure that there's a scrub any duplicates and that sort of thing.
Correct. And nor is there the matching purpose of signing.
Okay, just wanna make sure exactly the discrepancies.
Okay, just wanna take him in order. Sam, did you have your hand up?
I did. So who, it says, received by.
I think it's just getting caught under your... He's got one.
I got a backup plan.
There you go.
It says it was, who, that was turned into central office?
Correct.
And was a conversation had?
It was given to someone at central office, and all I know that their name was Alan, and they dropped them off. So here's some additional signatures.
There was no, hey, I'm here to deliver on this reason, sticky note, nothing like that. Just, here's some signatures?
Additional, stated as additional signatures, correct, Maggie?
Right.
Yep.
So we have good reason to believe they knew that there was a previous pile of signatures, and they intended to add to it.
And we do have repeat, not all the same, but we do have at least one repeated circulator. So a circulator...
So at least the same person.
Also has to validate who they are and that they're passing these around. So there was some overlap in the circulators. Oh, sorry, going down the row, Teresa?
How do we verify? Do we have to bring it back to the clerk and nail cross-reference? Or what, or do we just take it at face value and move on?
So again, my understanding, and we did consult with Drummond Woodsom, is that the option is, we have two options. We say this does not meet the criteria, and we do not accept it. Or we give, the second option was at this meeting, we could decide to give these petitioners more time with criteria for getting the correct number of signatures. Before this meeting happened, you know, petitioners went and continued gathering signatures. So deciding the terms of which those additional signatures would be accepted, you know, is work we haven't done. So would town clerks verify that for us? Would town clerks say, no, that is not our work? We have verified their, you know, you have two separate petitions on your hand. That's for you to deal with. And potentially, we have someone in central office spend a day. They would have to type every name into a PowerPoint presentat, no, excuse me, into like an Excel to check for duplicates, because I don't know how else you would, I don't know how else you would check for duplicates. So that, you know, is probably, you know, that's probably a day's work there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Gary?
So just to be clear, the second set of, first set of signatures did not have enough signatures to meet the threshold.
Correct.
The second set of signatures were dropped off with no cover letter, no documentation, nothing to indicate formally that they were actually gathered for the purpose.
Correct.
Other than a comment that may have been passed on by the person who dropped them off.
Yes.
I'll just open the comment that since this petition affects another entire community in a really big way, I think that that second set needed more identification if we're gonna consider it. I think, I'm not saying they did this. I'm not casting any real aspersion, but I do have debt. I can't help but think, if I'm a taxpayer in the other community and we're gonna accept signatures with no documentation, nothing that formally says these are actually part of a petition? The Town of Gray even considered it as a second petition? Okay, I don't see how they could be married, in my mind. I just, they could at least have a cover letter. They could at least have something that ties it to the first one, other than a say-so.
Okay. Any more clarifying questions before we move to that portion? Adam?
So with the second set of signatures, does that bump it up over the threshold?
Well...
If they were...
Qualifying that, if there are no duplicate signatures, then, and we combine them, then the threshold would be met.
There's an ethical question of, do we take this many signatures as a red flag enough to make a discussion about it? And then there's like a on-principle discussion where is the community holding us to a higher standard than we're gonna hold them to or they hold themselves to about dotting your i's and crossing your t's? And that's two discussions.
That is two discussions.
We're expected to do things right, to then not honor that or reciprocate that is, that's a tough one.
All right, moving in, moving into discussion. Fran?
Oh, I had a comment, yeah?
Yeah.
So if you give the petitioners another opportunity to get more signatures, how is that gonna change the situation?
We, that would...
Which is one of the options that they have.
Right, that's one of, that is one of the things we would have to discuss. If we wanted to say, if we wanted to respond to a petitioner, and I would say for the sake of argument, I actually don't know, but let's say our original petitioner, who had been in touch with us by email, who, you know, who asked how to send us materials, that's probably who I would reach out to and say, was the intention for these to be combined? Can you verify that these are, you know, the work of your original petition? And then we would, I assume, have to ask for them to be cross-referenced to verify that there weren't any duplicates. And then do we, is that work we do, is that work that we ask?
So explain why the petitions had to go to the superintendent office if the town clerk is the one who verifies the signatures? What was the role of the superintendent?
So the school board receives, per the statute, school board receives the petition through their secretary. Our secretary is Dr. Turner. The Town of Gray, we can't, we don't have the means to verify that they're registered voters. So the town clerks, their role is to verify that these were registered voters that signed. From there, they will give it to us with their markings, and we are the recipient, per statute, we're the recipient of the petition, which would then direct us to open the cost-sharing formula for discussion. And I think we are gonna probably circle around this a little bit. I don't know that we can do it exactly in a row. Another piece of it is the proposed cost-sharing formula on this petition, that's not part of the statute. You know, the statute is that petitioners could trigger the process for us to look at it, but that then follows the process by statute. And we would not, that would not be started with a foregone conclusion about what that formula would look like.
So if I may continue, there is nothing to say that the Board of Directors, all they need to do is accept the petitions, okay? And then it says or, or, that the school board itself can decide to send the request, not the petition, but the request over to the town council, to the, yeah, the town municipal government, the town council. And they would then convene a meeting and go from there. So the role of the school board really isn't one in this particular situation. And I wonder, has any of the school board members witnessed any of the signatures that were being done on even the second petition? Anyone was present while the petitions were, you know, giving the speech and that type of thing? Because well, it almost infers that the petitions were not being honest. I mean, that's, in all their intention, that's what they were trying to do is to bring the process forward for people to decide if it's gonna, you know, go forward or not.
Sure.
So that was all their only intent. There was no, you know, as far as I can tell, that they all worked very hard. They got the signatures right away, as I understand it. And I understand that, you know, I've been told there's been witnesses to the second section that, you know, they did everything the right way. I mean, it isn't a group that was looking to, you know, they weren't working their responsibility as petitioners, I guess. That's the best way of putting it. responsibility as petitioners, I guess, that's the best way of putting it. They didn't go to their friends and say, hey, can you sign this again? Something like that. And that, from your conversation, almost infers that.
No, absolutely, absolutely not, absolutely not, Fran.
Good, good, I hope that makes that clear, because we really need to make sure that is clear, that there's no-
Actually, the problem here is that I can't make that clear. So what, I assume best intentions, I have no reason not to. However, what we have in front of us and what we have as an entity that we have to make a decision on is this. You know, we have to work with what we have. I would have certainly much preferred it to go more smoothly, because I think it is unnecessarily divisive and not, and, and no, certainly not my intention. But we still ha-, as Adam said, we still, our hands are tied on doing some due diligence here. Sam?
Yeah, I think we have a couple of options for going forward. I do want to reiterate what Fran said, which is, if we as a board want to honor the spirit of the effort, we could just as a board vote to do this, all we need is a majority of the board to do that, someone could make a motion, we could just do it, we don't need the petitions. And that would sort of obviate the, you know, they didn't follow every letter of the law, well, you know, the spirit is there, and if the willingness was also on the board, then we could just sort of say that we're, you know, in concert. Or I think we could put this, you know, I don't think we need to take action this minute, right? I don't see anything in the law that says you have to act on the petitions within a certain amount of time. We could postpone it to the next special meeting or something and hear some testimony for some people that were involved with this, you know, if the circulator and, you know, a couple of the signers wanted to come up and express their intentions, if Susan Fuller, who delivered the original batch, wanted to, you know, vouch for the second batch or whatever, that might change our opinion. So I want to just put those out there as possibilities as part of the discussion.
Appreciate that. I don't disagree in how I've been thinking about this, because we've had some time to sit with it, is, is kind of two parts. I have a really hard time accepting a thing where the process wasn't followed, even with best intentions, because that puts us in a bad position. And we held, you know, we are held by the community to follow the process, so we have 700 people who have sent us a message, we also have tens of thousands of other people in the community who have not weighed in on this. And I'm not really wanting them to show up en masse in November and say, what did you do? Why did you accept a poorly executed petition? At the same time, I received this as though I got 700 emails. If I got 700 emails in the school board email account, we would be talking about it. Whatever that was would find its way to our agenda. I mean, we maybe get an email a month. So I think that there's a route here where we say, on its, you know, legal merits, it does not hold water. We could ask the petitioners to return to, to their signature gathering, to put the right wording on this and to have those names cross-referenced. We also could simply say, as a board, this is a pretty strong message, what information, if any, do we need in order to ourselves put it to a vote? And say, let's go ahead and relook at the cost sharing. To Sam's point, that doesn't have to be done immediately. I would also be interested in hearing what information folks would want to know to make that decision. Are there, is there information that we would want to look at that would help educate your decision? Or is just knowing that 700 people wants to do it, you know, plenty? It is not free. The cost of doing it is incurred by the district. It will take some time and resources and from the back of envelope work we've done, probably to the tune of $10,000 to the district. And is that, you know, what, does that go way into the calculus at all? Does the timing? When do we pursue it? What would happen if there was a change?
Point of order, I think we need to stick on just that one question and all the things that could happen really isn't relating to the motion on the table.
Well, there is no motion on the table, Fran.
A discussion, I mean, it's basically, you know, to stick with what's on that one sentence, talking about the petition itself, whether we're going to accept it or not, all the ifs, ands, and all the other stuff, I don't think relates the, the sentence that's there for the public. If I may object to the caveat on of any continuation of what can happen or what will happen and all that. We're not concerned with that right now, we have to concern ourselves whether or not we're going to accept the petition or we're going to instead just take, hearing the sentiment of the community and the voting down of the budget too, don't forget.
Fran?
We're going to go ahead as a group.
Fran, you're doing exactly what-
No, we're going to do the second thing.
You're doing exactly what you just described. You're saying, we have-
I'm doing the either or.
You're saying the either or. And so the things that we're all talking about are either or. So we can continue the discussion and hear everybody out on either or, or I can bring it right back to, is this petition pass muster or not? And then we can take it up separately. It feels pretty related to everybody, so I'm going to allow the continued discussion. Adam?
If we, I think we're bound to follow the correct procedure regardless of what it is. So I think we owe it to everybody to follow the right path. So if that means we accept it bearing there's enough signatures that aren't duplicates or whatever, that's one thing. Versus we just reject it wholeheartedly because it was not done right or whatever. So is that like, we have to decide to accept it as is, we accept it pending verification of the second batch of signatures, we just reject it outright? Are those like three choices or?
Yeah, so our, so our options just straight up with, with, we are in, within legal bounds to say this does not meet the statute or the criteria, we reject it out of hand. We are also in bounds to say, we accept this petition and we provide petitioners additional time to do the work needed. We would set the time, we would set the date, and we would set what that looked like. So would we, then we would have to decide, does that mean we task one of our employees with verifying that there aren't any repeats? Do we ask the petitioners to put these into a spreadsheet and provide it to us with all the names, so it can be verified that there aren't duplicates? You know, there's some wiggle room here and that would be for us to say. Gary?
I still come back to, this petition is going to affect taxes and finances and relationships with the entire, the entire community of Gloucester, who was not included in any of this. I think the least the petitioners could have done is do the process correctly. The petition was turned in without enough signatures. It's that simple. It didn't, it didn't, and yes, they went back and got some more, okay, but they took, there was a two distinctly different documents. I do not group them. They, they chose to turn it in with insufficient signatures. I think there's nothing to stop them from starting over and collecting signatures again and turning in a fresh, fresh petition. But I don't think it's, I, I haven't heard anything from anyone in Gloucester saying this is a good idea. And yet, they're going to be forced into this process by us if we approve it based on an, on an insufficient document. If you want to just go black and white, yes or no, the original document asked turned in was insufficient, period.
Misty?
I agree with Gary only because we have all had to sign petitions to be on this board. We had to go out and collect signatures, we had to submit them to the town, they had to be verified, and then if they were duplicates, they were turned away. And we could have all said, they could have said, nope, this wasn't done, it's black or white, you didn't collect the right enough signatures, sorry, too bad. And that's how this should be handled as well, this shouldn't be any different, that it's looked at the same way as every petition is ever submitted. It needs to be complete, there needs to be, you know, when you get a petition signed, you don't turn it in with so many extra signatures, because you know some of them are not going to be correct, or, or they might be duplicates, or there's a million reasons why some signatures are not verified as legit. So I feel like when you're doing this process and it's so many signatures, you make sure that what you're submitting is the full document from the beginning, so that there's no question. Because if it was anybody else running for office, whether it be a school board, government, state, anything like that, you know the boundaries when you're submitting a petition, and if it's not done right, then it's not accepted.
Adam?
We could honor the spirit of the combined petitions and hold like a discussion and invite New Gloucester residents to come up and at least weigh in one way or the other, and at least there's an opportunity to speak on their own behalf on, of what they feel about it. I don't know if that agrees to accept it or not, but-
I think we do, I do think we have to look at these as individual things, and I, and I will remind folks, you know, it's one of my favorite drums to beat, when it comes to MSAD-15, we are not voters of Gray, voters of New Gloucester, we are voters of MSAD-15. So if the petitioners or the petition meet the threshold, they actually don't have to include, you know, we don't have to hear a voice of New Gloucester, because this shouldn't have, this should just be the voice of MSAD-15. So I think we want to, I just think we want to be careful with that. And, and I don't want to ask the petitioners to say, oh, we got to invite in someone to come debate your petition, you know, that's not, that's not how it works. Is, one sec, Sam. Before I go to Sam again, is there anyone who hasn't weighed in, who has something to say? And then we'll go to Sam and then I'm going to look for a motion on this petition. Teresa?
With a proper cover letter, like, and then, but we still have to verify the second set of, make sure there's no duplicates.
Correct.
One sec, did you have something more? Or are you just thinking about touching your microphone?
Okay. I have to echo a lot of the sentiment of Gary and Adam and Misty is that there is a process, but I also, in recognizing that this is a two-step process, that we do receive it as understanding that there's an intent here. And the next step is that do we want to consider it as a board? So I'm in favor of the two steps, that's here.
Jim, I'm stopping at you on the way down.
My name is on the first batch, I'm sure, and I support what they're trying to do, but I don't like to set precedents of sloppy, you know, that's not the right word, but I like, I like to follow the procedures, so people that don't agree with me know that the process was followed correctly. And even though I, even though I disagree with, I mean, I agree with, with Gary on what he said, even though I'm sure we're on different sides of this issue, but, and with Misty as well, it's, there's a process and the, there wasn't a time limit here, it wasn't like in the state ballots where you have to get it in by a certain date. There was, you know, just make sure you get all your, your papers working and then bring it in. This, this haphazardness of it just doesn't really set well with me and I, and it pains me, because I really support what they were doing. But, you know, let's, you know, November's coming, let's do it again if we have to, but get it right.
Excuse me, sir, sorry, you can't speak right now. Sam, did you, sir, you're not allowed to speak right now. Sir, Sam? That's going to be my final warning, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
All right, well, get the signatures, make sure you have all your signatures before you submit them. It's like submitting your homework and you forgot the last ten, the last sheet, you know? It's late.
Sam?
And that, so that was going to be my question. I, I just feel like we don't necessarily have enough, I feel like we could postpone any vote on making a decision if we wanted to invite testimony. I would be interested in if there is precedent for this sort of signature submission, you know, like, as Jim was saying, all the petitioning that I know about are, you know, either to get on a ballot or, you know, for a reference, referendum of some kind, I, you know, these ones that have no time horizon, you know, is there precedent for you submit one batch and then a little bit more later? Is there process other clerks could tell us about? You know, I would be willing, you know, so I'm not making this motion, but I could see a universe where I make a motion to, you know, allow the petitioners to identify an agreed-upon third party to do the de-duping, and then, you know, we agree that third party is, you know, reputable, and when they, you know, if there are costs, the petitioners pay for it, and they resubmit them, and then I would be perfectly happy to accept them. I, I think it's really just the, just the unknown, you know, like, even the best petitioners could just not remember that they asked someone to sign and previously, I, I just think we would be irresponsible to accept them as they are, but I think the effort has been done, and I respect that there are enough signatures here if they are not duplicated. So, you know, I would make that motion if people thought that sounds fair. Well, we could go into, well, I could go, let me, let's make the motion, we could go into discussion.
Let's, let's make a motion.
So I move that we allow the petitioners to take the petitions back, identify a third party that we agree to be impartial, support the cost of that third party if they are incurred, and then resubmit to us for consideration at our next business meeting in November.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, fantastic. Discussion on that motion on the table. Misty?
I'm kind of okay with that. But one step further, is there a lawyer that we can talk to, our lawyer, about how this works?
So-
To make sure we're doing it correctly?
It's in the middle.
Yeah, so, and that's okay, we can, I can repeat it for the folks here too.
Just because everybody should hear those things.
So, we did speak with the lawyers, there, so there is room to be, to be generous, because we are receiving the petition. So in terms of what we're looking for to be acceptable means of signatures, that's why we have these options, we can reject it out of hand, or we can set some parameters. If you were going to Gray Town Hall or New Gloucester Town Hall, as was referenced before, for one of our positions, you, their policy is the, the signatures are received at once, and if it's not correct, the whole thing goes in the trash and you start over. That's what we're all told at the beginning. However, they don't receive this petition, the school board receives this petition. So there isn't a significant amount of precedent for this, the, within the district. I mean, this has certainly not happened here, so. I think the motion on the table is fair and appropriate. I was inclined to find a path to not, I, I would hate to see people have to start over, that, that feels like a waste of effort, and I feel this was a significant effort. I also want it done correctly. I also got hung up on, we do not have time or resource or money in our district to spend, to put people to administrative tasks of redoing someone else's work. The, the suggestion that Sam's made in his motion, that if a third party was selected and the petitioners incurred the cost of looking for dupes, I'm very comfortable with that. Anyone else want to weigh in for discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor? Right, opposed? You got it, Maggie? Okay, so motion passes, we will ask- We will ask Secretary Superintendent Dr. Turner to be in touch. I would presume we are assuming contact with the original petitioner as that who's we've had...that is who we had email contact with, with the appropriate cover letter to verify that these signatures went hand in hand and to offer what was...what we voted on here tonight. And we would consider that at the next business meeting after it being received. So, we don't have to get caught up on a time if it was done in time for November. I would say in time, if no one disagrees, in time when materials go out. So, if we don't have it finished, when the agenda goes out the week before, it would need to go to the next meeting because folks would not have time to look at it. Does that make sense to folks?
For clarification, that would be October 30. We will send...we generally send the...we would plan to send the November business meeting materials the morning of October 30, so it would need to be received before that.
Okay.
For that month.
Great. Because I don't wish to put a time limit on it. I really don't want gotchas on this. I feel like that's a pretty reasonable solution. Okay. Great. Thank you, everybody, for participating so thoughtfully and respectfully in that. I know that's a tricky thing. And just to repeat, we take this very seriously. This is a lot of folks that we're hearing from and will want to do our due diligence. So, appreciate people who took the time to participate in that. All right. So, now that's actually the...that's our new business for tonight. Wasn't sure how long we were going to spend on it. And we can go right into committee reports. Facilities.
All right. So, facilities met on October 8th. Went over completed projects, in progress and working on getting a project that our plan started. Received three bids for a new bus lift. Some are coming in a little bit less than anticipated, whichever company we choose to go with. They would install and provide use and maintenance training along with offering various warranties. As of the 8th, Done and Memorial were about 85% complete with our ATRAC projects. And the high school and middle school were just behind them. They're still working in less invasive places and they're mostly out of the classroom. The middle school has begun doing testing and balancing. We're trying to...keeping up with our outdoor field work as fall sports are in full swing. Still shuffling around some of our projects, locker rooms and dugouts, trying to not interfere with upcoming athletic and co-curricular activities. Potentially looking at re-sodding and leveling our football soccer field. That's going to have to be strategic with the scheduling there. David and Todd presented a summertime completed work list with over 100 completed projects along with services and inspections. Sometimes we let some of the little smaller projects go unreported on and it...we figured it would do some justice to our staff to kind of recognize all of those. For new business, we again reviewed the charges of the facilities committee, talking about our roles and responsibilities. We touched that our district nutrition program didn't really have a home and are in talks about adding that to the charge of facilities so we could get a regular set of eyes on it. So, with the addition of security and transportation to facilities and potentially school nutrition, we kind of felt like maybe we should change the name of the facilities committee to include operations so that that's sort of like an umbrella over all of these things. We're going to kick it over with policy to work on verbiage for that. We are looking to finalize our yearly committee calendar as these are public meetings. If someone had a hot topic that they wanted to discuss, like transportation or whatever, they could...they could come to facilities and bring their questions and comments there. We are looking at our proposed list of upcoming projects for the year. We got a big influx from our reserve and are very much treating this like a one-and-done kind of fund. So, we're trying to be really strategic with that. We ended the meeting kind of talking about determining what our community values in our district and what kind of look and feel they want. And are talking about enlisting community members as like an ad hoc committee to potentially help shape like our district portrait moving into our strategic plan. And that was it.
Questions for facilities? All right. Thanks, Adam. Finance?
All right. Finance met on September 24th. We considered purchasing the bus lift that was mentioned. We got three bids on it. Ended up agreeing to spend $48,342.05 on that. We reviewed our finance committee charges and took a look at our legislative impacts and how they might affect the budgeting of the district. For example, a law was passed that requires the legislature to review the EPS formula, the ED 279. And we agreed to put on our agenda a discussion of that as a finance committee and maybe make some recommendations to the board as a whole as to how we might influence the decision-making when they do that examination. A lot of times, the legislative committees don't hear from the on-the-ground school boards who are actually grappling with these budget issues and seeing the day-to-day impact of dollars coming down from the state. And then we also talked about budget transfers and fun things like that where we changed the little numbers that we use to tell people that we paid for a photocopier. And then we looked at the expense and revenue reports, which were all generally in line.
Questions for Sam?
Sorry. I wanted to...one thing to mention is that David and his team in the district office now has given us two new slices that we're going to see every month in the finance committee. So, now we get a year-to-date report on spend by article and a year-to-date report on spend by function, which are new reports that we've never really gotten monthly before. And they are byproduct of our highly enjoyable budget process this summer. We realized that we needed new and different ways to provide transparency into our budget.
Thank you. Folks can see those reports that Sam's referring to inside the minutes from the finance committee that's linked in our agenda tonight. Questions for Sam? All right. Personnel?
So, September 9th was the first meeting of the personnel committee. And first order was to elect me as committee chair. And then our next meeting is going to be next Wednesday, October 8th. And then we...there was new old business, but getting into new business. So, Dr. Turner presented us with the work and the planning for the upcoming year. And in the work, sort of outlined an agenda for each month that we do meet, what we will be tackling. And sort of the theme was understand that we're going to be working on the collective bargaining for the teacher's contract and then also still continuing on with updating or creating the job descriptions. And then also, moving on, she talked about the transportation staffing. So, we are posting in one unbudgeted bus driver position that's going to address some upcoming unexpected staffing challenges. And that was the end of our meeting.
Questions? Personnel? All right. Thank you. Curriculum?
Curriculum met on the 3rd of last month, September 3rd. And it was the first meeting for both of the new curriculum committee and our new curriculum director, Kathy Martin. So, we all get to say hi. First order of business, I was elected chair, so good luck with that. Kathy provided us an update on the ESEA and ESSA funding and changes a lot of conversation around significant changes to Title II funding and how that can be spread between the schools. Used to be...yeah, you used to have more freedom with how you spent between schools and now you don't. So, it's going to require some juggling in other ways in order to fund projects. Reviewed committee role and procedures and policies. There'd be some policy work coming out of this year. And it's just hard to report because we also met tonight where a lot of what was just...we were projecting from last month, we actually get to see tonight. But you didn't...you're not going to get to see it. So, all you're going to do...get to hear is that we planned to do some work and have presentation around curriculum review and program selection process, which will be addressed in greater detail at the next meeting. And it was. And you'll get to see that. And you'll get to see that next month. Although it's in our packet. If you want to go and look at the curriculum committee packet from tonight, you can see that material. And then Kathy went over a projected calendar for the year, outlining the work for the next ...for the next year. And that was really...it was a getting-to-know-you meeting more than anything.
So, now you see why historically, facilities just wings their report immediately following their meeting because it's all fresh in their mind. So, any questions for curriculum last month?
Last month.
I think I do. So, on B, on the report about the ESSA allocations. It looks like there'll be less coming for support professionals' development for all the schools. Does that information go to the finance committee for their discussion and how they want to include that, you know, as it being talked through the budget time? I don't know how that works. I would assume that that's what would happen.
Well, my understanding, and Kathy might be able to explain this better, my understanding is that we used to be able to spread...we got title funding and we were able to do professional development, include people from other schools in that development. And now we can't. The funding for a Title I school has to go to the Title I school.
And what kind of impact does it have on our district?
I don't know if we know that yet. Do we know that yet, Jenna?
It means that we had to move some things around. So, there are some things that...where we had some things budgeted in the local budget and we had other pieces budgeted out of title that because of the location of it, we had to, you know, because we were only allowed to put...let me back up. When we're planning to use title funds at all five schools...
Right.
And then they came in at the last minute and said, "Just kidding. You can't use it at all five schools. You can only use it at these three." So, what we had to do is take the things at the two schools that aren't allowed, that we were planning to put in title, and move that into local, which then opened up more money for the other three schools. So, we took things out of local and put it into title. So, it's all awash. It doesn't change the local budget. It doesn't change the title. It's just the specific people or projects or expenses that we're paying. We're just paying from a different funding source than we were before. It doesn't change the plan. It doesn't change the budget. It doesn't change anything like that. It's just where the revenue, where it's getting billed to, what sort...what pot of money it's getting billed to just changed around a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Policy?
So, policy met on September 17th. It was nominated and then approved as the chair. So, this will probably be the shortest time you guys hear me talk. Old business. And really, the bulk of the meeting was about discussing the workload for the year and how do we want to organize it? Do we want to stick with sort of a chronological order that we've been doing with the addition of anything new that comes in? Or do we want to group things together that are sort of in a similar bucket so that we're sort of not going to policies that are together at different times? And then also anything that would be budget impacting. And then we have other things, too, that sort of cross with other committees. And so, policy will be busy this year is sort of the short answer. And we're going to kind of mix things. We're going to try to do something where we're making sure we're getting to all the older policies so nothing is waiting too long, but also similar buckets. So, trying to do a catch-all so that things don't get sort of duplicated. And that was really it for our first meeting.
Questions for policy?
I am a little out of turn because I missed something in the last one.
That's okay.
In curriculum, so when you're ready, can I go back to that? I have one more.
Yeah. Yeah, you're okay.
All right. Then D, in the curriculum, it talks about the MAP-THMAT program being updated, discussion about having it updated. And so, I'm wondering what that's all about because didn't we just get that MAP program?
So, it's to receive a report about how that's going.
Okay. That's what that means. I thought that might be, but I wanted to clarify it.
Yeah. You guys just invest, right? We, as a district, invested a lot of money. We thought you might like to hear how that's going. Yeah. So, the plan is in April to give a full implementation update on that.
Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions for any committee reports before we move on? Great. School board chair report. Just a couple of quick things as a reminder that we are...registration's open for the MSMA. That's the Main School Management Association Fall Conference. It will be the 23rd and the 24th of October this year. That is in Augusta. It's a pretty robust and useful couple of days if anyone can spare the time. Also, attendance is not...attendance on one day does not mean you have to do both. I have found the first day, I think, to be a little more robust if you're just targeting a day. But if folks are interested or able to come to that, you'll want to let Maggie know on or before tomorrow. So, this is your last call for MSMA conference. I know a couple of people have already signed up. I'm looking forward to it myself, so if you can join us, great. And I just wanted to...there's not a link for it here because it would qualify as a surprise by me emailing it to Dr. Turner about 45 minutes before our meeting. But I did take the last round of input from folks this afternoon on the board handbook. That's not a voting item, but I think we're pretty much there with that. We'll have central office take a look at it one more time and then that will be available to everybody online. I did split the difference and put the ethics policy in full under the norms with a note of the date that it was done, knowing that we are asking policy to look at that this year. And then just some brief narratives that folks asked to include on sort of how meetings and such work. So, I think and hope that will be useful and we can continue to take a look at that every year and keep making it better. But I think we have a pretty usable document at this point, so look forward to seeing that online when Maggie's put her eagle eye on it one more time because I have touched it. So, that means it's not necessarily as solid anymore. That's it for me. Fran?
I'm going to ask for...I don't know if I can...I don't know if I'm working for that seminar. I won't know until Friday. It's just a couple of days difference and, you know, is that tight? No. Okay. Good. I won't know until Friday.
I won't know until Friday.
She was trying to build in some time and force us.
Maggie built herself in a little buffer for that. She's not planning to submit it till Monday.
She knew I might have to, okay, she knew that.
Yeah. Everybody's.
Everybody else has to stay by tomorrow. Fran can say.
Fran gets a pass.
You'll have to wait.
And then, oh yes, just to call folks' attention to it because it is a little unusual. We are going to have a joint meeting in November of facilities and policy. Rather than ask facilities to look at the meetings like the, around the building temperature and security cameras and then ask policy to look at the same. Policy normally wouldn't meet in November because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So, instead of losing that time, we're going to have a joint meeting of policy and facilities committees to work through those facilities-related policies that are now required. The temperature one being required by law that we don't have.
Date again?
The date on, the date on that is November 12th at 6:30.
Where will we be?
And that is here. Let me confirm while we're sitting here. Make sure I am not leading you astray. Yes, here, thank you, Kathy. So, that's here on the date I just said, the 12th at 6:30. So, we'll have facilities and policy together because that's, it's going to be a pretty, it's going to be a lot to talk about. So, we thought it made sense for folks to talk about it together.
We do now have sample policy from MSMA to work from. So, we're a little better off than we were, but it still leaves an awful lot of room for interpretation and decisions, so.
Hey, I just make one suggestion. When you're hosting these meetings, it doesn't say where they're going to be held in the school. Some schools are pretty large, so I don't know if, you know, like I thought this meeting was going to be held downstairs, or if it's downstairs. So, I didn't realize it was up here. It doesn't say so.
Okay.
So, just a suggestion that it'd be easier in the future.
We can absolutely do that.
All right, and now superintendent report?
We have some fabulous new hires to report. Morgan Garrison has come on as our permanent school year sub at the middle school. And to remind the board, those are the positions that you all approved in our schools that allow someone to be the substitute of the building. We are so often short of people who are willing to come in and sub for teachers when they are sick or out for other reasons, that having that one person in the school is extremely important. We always know we have at least one teacher covered when someone is out. So, it's huge and we so appreciate Morgan being willing to come on and be a substitute full-time. We also have hired Thomas Hamilton as a mechanic. Tom, Thomas is a, currently a student. And so, he's going to be coming on with us part-time as a, on a temporary basis to help out in transportation while our mechanic position is open. He'll be doing that under the direction of John and our full-time mechanic, Nick Hutchin. So, great opportunity for Thomas, great opportunity for us. We're really pleased that it's going to work out. You will see our mechanic position still posted. We will continue to look for a full-time mechanic until, you know, until such time we're able to fill it. But with Thomas being willing to come on and having the skills to help out, we are going to move forward with that. So, we're very, very pleased. And then, the third very exciting hire is Mayra Teles, who is going to be the school secretary at the middle school. And the middle school and all middle school parents are probably going to be thrilled because if you read my superintendent's letter, you see I've been helping out answering the phone and, and poor middle school because I don't know how to do anything. Like, can you transfer me? I don't, I don't know how to do that. So, and I put someone on hold. Apparently, that was the wrong thing to do. I think sometimes they're like, we're okay, you don't have to come help because I'm not sure. I tried. But I'll be there tomorrow morning helping, so fair warning. But Mayra will be coming on with us soon and we're very excited to have her. We have three resignations. I'm going to start with the middle one, which is Alan Molnar, academic life skills teacher at the high school. Alan actually resigned in July and we realized it never made it on an agenda for a report. So, it's not a new resignation. It did happen in July. That opening has been posted all summer. We have unfortunately not been able to fill it yet, but that is a previously known open position. We've talked about, we just never apparently reported the resignation. And then we do have two ed techs, Sydney LaFavor here at Dunn School and Jody Walker at Memorial School who have moved on. We do already have some action on those with some nominations in process. So, if all goes well, I'm hoping to have some new hires to you next month. We had no transfers and we had no retirements. And then the only other thing I'll add is to bookmark to the, to the whole board. I've talked with a lot of you, certainly the chairs and others, about just trying to get our arms around this work that we do. We have taken the school, the calendar of work documents that most committees have at least started and we have put it into a document that maps all the committees and all the months so that we can see that when a job description starts in facilities in this month, it's going to personnel in the next month and then it's going to the board in the next month. We have now color-coded it to align with the strategic plan priorities so you can see where we're doing strategic plan work. And we have drafted in some things that maybe aren't decided. For example, we are working with the finance committee over the next couple of meetings to decide what our budget process is going to look like. So, we've like penciled in some initial thoughts and ideas that folks have had, but that it will be a working document. It is anticipated. It's going to change all the time, of course. But we thought it might be helpful for some of you to kind of see how that work is flowing committee to committee. So, we are going to work to make that available to you, I'm hoping, before the end of the week so that you all can see that. But I wanted to preview that that will be available if you're curious ever to see. How does this fit in the big picture of the work that's moving through all of our committees and the business? It's going to be mapped out in a way that hopefully makes sense to more than just me. But it's been a big project and helpful, I think, for Maggie and I just to make sure we're staying straight on getting you the information that you need when you need it.
And also, when you see it, it reads sort of like a poster, a calendar. We have had feedback from folks at our website. You know, the information's there, but it's a cover stuff. It's, you're clicking, 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 you know, through all our folders. I would love this. I've asked Dr. Turner to consider having this live on the board website so that folks can see at a glance what we're working on all year. And to Adam's point earlier, oh, this particular issue is a big one to me. It looks like I should go to the personnel meeting in December where they're actively talking about that. So, hopefully that will be a useful aid for us and the public.
And if you look at it and find it confusing, you don't have to use it. Please don't feel obligated by any means. And that is all I have.
All right, any questions for Dr. Turner? Your report? Motion to adjourn? Second. 8:03, thank you. Who brought me tabs?